Can we, can I have a motion to go back into public session, please? Alex, thank you. Lisa, thank you. All in favor? All right, great. So, we are, we need to stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item on our agenda this morning is the call for the election of the president. Do you need to say something, Christine, or?
We can accept nominations and then we're going to vote at the moment.
Okay. Would anyone like to nominate anyone for president?
I would like to nominate Alex Wheelahan for president.
Do I have a second? Bruce, thank you. Any other nominations? Any discussion? Okay. Can we have a vote? Everybody in favor of Alex Wheelahan for president?
You should vote.
Okay, thank you. So...
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. And now we have to administer the oath to the president, please.
You don't have it?
No.
Really?
It's on.
How about, we need a full oath book.
Yeah, let me go grab it from Liz. One sec.
Okay.
I'll be right with you.
Okay. All right. So, are there any nominations for the office of Vice President of the Cold Spring Harbor Board of Education? Bruce?
Heather?
Thank you. So Heather's nominated for Vice President. Any further nominations?
Any second?
Alex, thank you. Any further nominations?
Heather, you accept it?
I accept it.
Okay. If there are no further nominations, I declare the nominations closed and ask support for the following: that Heather be elected Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year. Does everybody vote in favor of Heather for Vice President? Okay, great. So be it resolved that in the absence of the President of the Board of Education or in their inability to act, the Vice President of the Board of Education be and is hereby authorized to assume all of the responsibilities and perform all of the duties of the President of said Board of Education as provided by law. So now, let's do the oath for Alex and for Heather, please.
Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Alexandra Wheelahan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of President of the Board of Education.
Of President of the Board of Education.
Of the Cold Spring Harbor Central School District.
Of the Cold Spring Harbor Central School District.
Just a matter of words.
Thank you.
(applause) I'm just waiting for it to get said.
Okay.
Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Heather Maria DeYoung.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Of the Cold Spring Harbor Central School District.
Of the Cold Spring Harbor Central School District.
Congratulations.
(applause)
Change your clothes positions. Okay. Look at you. I got to take my. All right. All right. After identifying themselves, residents may comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Would anyone like to speak? Please state your name and address. Come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Yeah, we're recording.
Yeah.
Okay. David A. Leibler, to your resident. First, I just wanted to thank the BOE for your service, your time, your efforts. We all appreciate the volunteerism. We appreciate the time. I knew I came in super hot the last meeting, and I want to apologize for that. But obviously, as a parent, I only really get involved on issue-based things that personally affect my family. As a political consultant for 10, 12 years, I've been down this road. I came from a place in Hoboken where it was like the Hatfields or the McCoys. Unfortunately, you had to pick a side. And when you got into it, whether it was the BOE or City Council, you were on a side, for better or for worse. That's not what I'm trying to do in this town. Again, I never wanted to come to one of these meetings unless it was to applause, to say good things, to maybe ask for something light. But this isn't light. This is not light. You have people here today that honestly, I don't think anyone really wanted to be here today. I canceled meetings just to be here today. There's another meeting coming up. I apologize to the Assistant Superintendent today because I feel like I'm coming in half-cocked. Like, I don't have data. And for somebody who is, as a former professional on this topic and this type of environment, I can't come in half-cocked anymore. I need data. I need to understand. I'm happy to take any one of you to lunch, dinner, breakfast, coffee. I want to understand why this is happening and what's going on. I'm under the assumption that the Lloyd Hill School is going to have 22, some classes 27, 28. Again, you're just hearing things. And what are we getting? We're getting a class list or something to kind of give us an idea of how many kids are in my daughter's second grade school. So it's frustrating. That's why I came in hot last week. So again, I want to apologize to the entire board, and I appreciate your time. So let's look up some things. Westside, Lloyd Harbor, two A schools. This is why you come to this town, right? You come to this town for the schools. True or in a false? I know you don't, this isn't a debate, this isn't a conversation, but I know the parents will say, "We come here for the schools."
And we need the taxes.
Forget the taxes for a second. We come here for the schools. We will pay the piper, which is the taxes. We decide that. That's based on our means. We decide in a town what can we afford and what kind of school can we get. So let's look at some stats. This is the stats that I have, right? Right out of Google, niche, elementaryschools.org, the 15 that I went to. Westside, A. Lloyd, A. Blue Ribbon, Westside. Blue Ribbon, recently, Lloyd. Lloyd, over 300 students, has more teachers. Westside, less than 300 students, top 10 percent. Let's stop there for a second. One school is top 10 percent in Long Island. Lloyd is top 20 percent in Long Island. Look at the stats, right? We already have a difference. So, is that about class size? I keep digging, keep digging. Then I saw your email that said, a PDF, and I read it, and it was like, the word typical. You use the word typical. This is what typical class sizes have. Where? Where is it? Because I looked it up. The stats show in Long Island, New York, I think the class size max is like 21.7. National average is less. Are we striving to be typical? Are we striving to make the schools worse? Are we striving to put more pressure on the teachers? This is the most crucial time. What do you think half the parents here are thinking? Can we work with you? Can we work with you to resolve this issue and max the classes out at 18? Can both schools be fair? You're not broke. If we wanted to expand the school's physical layout, we probably could. We could probably, no, we could definitely hire more teachers. That's just definite. It's in the budget. So I'm just so confused, and I'm trying not to get emotional, that's why I write things down, and I don't just do this. If the governor is trying to sign a document that says max 20, what are we doing? What are you even contemplating? The governor is trying to do this in what, New York City? Why are we not trying to do better? If it's not budget, whose thought is this? That's what we want to know today. Whose thought is this to increase class sizes? And why? What is the reason? Tell us that, and then I have a baseline to have a debate with you about all the reasons why you're probably wrong. Smaller class sizes, better for the students, better for the grades, better for the attention, better for the, every part of this. So what are you thinking? Please. We're here, and I am here, to help. To help, not to combat you. Tell us what it's going to take to get this under 20. I already talked to the parents, 17, 18. I know we're not trying to be a private school. It's a public school, I get that. And I have a choice to take my kid out and put him into a private school tomorrow. That's not what we're trying to do. Do what's right. Make the class sizes smaller for the kid and for the teacher. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kristin Asta?
Oh, oh, that's.
You're on the list to speak, if you'd like to speak.
I didn't realize that. I thought I was just signing in.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I mean, okay, I'm happy to say something. So one of the reasons...
Come onto the mic, please.
Hi, Kristin Asta, 34, Harbor Hill Drive. So I recall, I moved here two years ago, and I recall the first PTG meeting that I came to at the Lloyd Harbor School last year, we were discussing analytics and how we compare with other schools. And we were talking about Suffolk County. And we were doing fantastic in Suffolk County, but we weren't striving to be the best in Suffolk County. We were striving to compete with the other schools like Syosset and Roslin and Great Neck. And it was admitted across the board that, yes, no, we're not there. So I'm just trying to understand how if we're trying to get there, right, we all want to be better, why would we be adding students to the class? One of the main reasons people send their children to private school is for the smaller class size, right? I think it's understood across the board that the less students there are, the more attention they have, the more individualized attention they have if they're struggling. It just doesn't make sense to me, and I've asked a million times why, and I'm not getting a clear answer. And I also feel that when I moved here, one of the choices I made was, am I going to move here and pay more taxes, or am I going to move somewhere where the taxes are lower and send my children to private school? And everyone said, "The school is like a private school. Lloyd Harbor School is like a private school." And really, to me, the only difference is, in a private school, is that the class size is smaller. So I don't know why we wouldn't do that. People pay for smaller class size. It's better. No one wants to pay for a bigger class size and more children. It doesn't make sense to me. So that's why I'm here. I'm just trying to figure out why. And it's also horrible for our property values, because once there's 30 kids in the class, people are going to say, "Why would I want to live in Cold Spring Harbor and Lloyd Harbor and pay more taxes when I can have the same amount of kids in my class, my child's class, and live somewhere with half the taxes?" So that's where I stand. I don't know. Thank you.
Greg?
No, it's okay. Nothing else to add.
Okay.
Two Gregs.
Thanks, everybody. So I think it's clear why. You've got to figure out the why and explain it. It's not going to work. I mean, there's no way you can say that more kids in the classroom is going to be better for the kids. And I don't even know how you manage the classroom, let alone teach in that type of environment. So I think the teachers are going to be stressed out about having to just get these kids, you know, in line and disciplined before they start learning. And the other thing is, you've got a teacher problem. I mean, they're miserable. And I've now heard this many, many times. They're afraid to speak up. They think they're going to be somehow negatively impacted, maybe fired. So we've got to work on the culture. That's a separate discussion, but I can tell you, they're not happy, they're scared. And then you go to them and say, "I'm going to grow your class size by 20, 30 percent." Like, you're going to break them. It's just what's going to happen. You're not going to have a passionate teacher. You're not going to have somebody who wants to be there. You're not going to have somebody who's really engaging. They're going to be stressed out. Kids are going to be stressed out, they're going to be stressed out. It's not going to work. And we have the money. If we don't, we should have a separate meeting about, you know, what's going on with the finances. So I do believe we have the money. And I think everybody's got the right intention in here about what's best for the kids. But when you cut away all the things in the budget and all those types of stuff, this is the number one thing that people care about. They really do. They want to make sure the kids are in a good environment, teachers are engaged, they're happy. So I really think the why has to be explicitly laid out, but to be candid, nobody's going to go for it. So I think we've got to go back to the drawing board, figure out what we can do. You know, we just went through new contracts. That's great, it's important. There's a lot of things going on in the world. Flation, I get it. But I think if we really put our heads together collectively and get on the same page, you're going to have a much better support system on this. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Oh, can I say something? I just signed up. Okay?
Just come up to the mic. Thank you.
I'm Jen Khan at Beardsley Lane in Lloyd Harbor. And first of all, congratulations, Alex and Heather, and welcome, Kate and Lisa. I just want to add, you know, of course, I'm also for lower class size, but I want to be kind of careful when we say that the teachers are unhappy. How do you know that? Like, if you know something, please say how. And also, if there are teachers who are unhappy, I can imagine them being unhappy about a number of things, including some of them is trust in the district. So unless someone actually says, can say, how they know that teachers are unhappy and about what, I don't think that we should be engaging in what amounts to gossip. That's all I have to say, really.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Motion to move on, do I do that? To discussion of, or moving on to discussion of class size, breakage in grade five.
Okay.
You know, can I just say something first?
Yeah, go ahead.
So a couple of questions have been asked, like, how did we get to this point? And so, for the purposes of Board of Education, we have, and we have some new members, so welcome Lisa and Kate and Mr. Woman, he might even be able to come for a portion of this meeting. But we have Board of Education guidelines that are established by our Board of Education. And those are the guidelines that the administration follows in setting up the enrollment for each section. And those guidelines are followed, and that's how the classes are set up. So if it's, the guideline says the up to 25 in a class, then that's how we budget. And so the budget's created based on the projected enrollment for the next year, and that's how they're established. So we take a look at that periodically throughout the spring, and then very, very carefully throughout the summer, because that's really when students move in, students move out of the district. You know, we get a little bit of information at the end of the school year, some families may notice, the principal or the teacher, or we're thinking of moving, or there's a potential that we're moving. And so we try to take all that into consideration. For purposes of Lloyd Harbor, grade four this year, we take a look at those numbers through the first week in August. So last year, the enrollment in Lloyd Harbor by the, really the second week of August, was 78 and 79 students, therefore creating those four sections. By the time school started, we lost two more students. And so that brought that down to 77. And therefore, we started with the four sections, which was in the Board of Ed guidelines, but, I'm sorry, 79, which was within the Board of Ed guidelines to create four sections. When we started the school year, technically, it should have been three sections. But we have like a time window there, like from the first week in August till school starts, to make those sections. You know, it's not only creating a classroom, but you have to build the schedule for art, PE, music, and do we need additional teachers to create those? And then some of our teachers travel, so it's really a big puzzle, and we need time to be able to do that. In addition, informing families who their classroom teacher is, and then balancing those classes. So when we're taking a look at that in the spring, if we know that there's a section that's kind of on the cusp, or where I say inching up to it, we highlight that, and we monitor that very carefully throughout the summer. For our new board members, you'll get an update every week of where the updates are with regard to our registrar. Typically, there's more movement, you know, in kindergarten, we get some more kids in, you know, new families who've come in. We've tried to move that up into January, February this year for kindergarten enrollment, so we have better projections. So that's really how the class sizes came to be four, to start the school year out, and they're now three. The administration is following the guidelines set by the Board of Education. Now, last year, Westside, it just so happens, this grade was very similar, like it was right on the cusp. In their case, they never got to the breakage point. So they didn't go over, but they were very close. We had a discussion, and we, the Board approved adding a teacher assistant, which you can see in the Board of Education guidelines is also an option. So you might not add a teacher, but you might add a teacher assistant to provide support. That teacher assistant worked with our grade four students at Westside, there were two classes, and pushed in during the ELA and math blocks. In the case, at that point, it would have been like 13 kids to one teacher during those instructional periods. That's been an option. It's happened many times in the district. I do want to say, I have great faith in our teachers, you know, whether they have 19 kids, whether they have 20 kids, or they have 23, 24, 25. Our teachers are good teachers. I've looked at some of our data, classes of 25, believe it or not, here have outperformed classes of 20. So with that said, I think you can, as, you know, some of the parents have made statements today, small class sizes, you can do a lot. You can differentiate instruction. There's plenty, plenty of reasons to make small class sizes and benefit children. And it's also important to look at the makeup of those classes. There might be reasons where we take a look at some of the behaviors, or there might be even a special needs child with, has a lot of equipment and things in the class that need more space. We have built, just even if you take a look at Goose Hill, some of our new construction, all of our cabinetry, has really made the classroom a lot smaller in our grade one classes, but in the kindergarten classes, they're much bigger. So those are things to take, you know, into consideration. Do we want centers, spaces for students to work and move around? And those are things our Board of Education has always taken into consideration. And so, look, I have great faith in our teachers, I have great faith in our Board of Education, that whatever the decisions are made, you know, we'll make the accommodation and meet the needs of our kids.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think what's important to note in what you said, too, is it's Board guidelines that were set quite some time ago, that the administration follows, and then the Board is looking at the numbers and monitoring the numbers, which is one of the reasons why we asked to have a meeting today, to start the discussion early. We know community members are concerned, and we're focusing right now on one grade level, knowing that things take time, and we need a lot of information. You'll hear the information that some of us will ask for today to help us make decisions in possible exceptions to guidelines while guidelines are being reviewed, and then also looking at the guidelines again. So I think there's multi-levels here, and a lot of considerations that go into looking at these, but of course, the students are primary concern.
Can you tell us what the guidelines are? Because maybe that's the data that we just don't know.
Were they posted on the...
That's the vote that maybe could happen in the future, reducing those guidelines.
So that's actually, it's on, if you look on the website, it's on our district website, and actually, the discussion of the guidelines is on the agenda for the next...
Can you tell us, what are some of the numbers that are in the...
Sure. Typical range of the Board Guidelines for kindergarten and first grade, typical ranges are from 18 to 23 per class. When it gets to a class, look, it's different, I'm not going to go into list-level detail, but when it gets to 24, essentially, that's when it breaks for K and 1. For grades two and three, it's 20 to 25. When it gets to 26, it breaks the section. Grade four, 21 to 26. When it rises to 27, that's when the section breaks. Five and six, it's 22 to 27. And then when it gets to 28, just one class, when I say break, it has to be just one section breaks. Not all of them have to get to the 28.
There's the problem. I'm sorry to be rough, but your guidelines are just off.
Can we just talk about, can we just talk about a little bit of the history of this?
Yeah.
Right, and you can't be engaging with the community.
Can we, can we talk about the history? So, so...
Go ahead, Tammy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, the guidelines are called guidelines for a reason. No matter what these guidelines have said, since I have been on the Board, we have been looking at these class sizes every year. So I want to be very clear about that. And these guidelines are up for discussion on Tuesday next week. So for today, we decided that, you know, we wanted to talk about the fifth grade in particular because we were, you know, concerned that the community is upset about it, right? I mean, obviously, the community is upset about it. I want to say that I absolutely don't think that our fifth grade should have 26 kids in that classroom, okay? I want to be very clear about that. And so, I'm sorry that, you know, there may have been misinformation in the community or a misunderstanding. You know, we're going to be taking a very serious look at these guidelines, and over the, you know, next period of time, really thinking about it together as a group. And make no mistake, we take this very seriously. And 26 kids for the fifth grade, in my opinion, is not reasonable in this district. So, but for today, we thought, we need to ask the administration for more information, okay? So one of the pieces of information that's very important, right? I mean, you all may say, "Cost is not an issue." There are a lot of people who are taxpayers in this community who care about the cost. And so the Board of Education needs to understand the cost of adding teachers. If we break these classes and we end up setting guidelines that creates five sections in a grade, six sections in a grade, we need to understand that cost going forward. A teacher is not just their salary once a year. They get tenure, they get benefits. You're talking about like a $2 to $3 million commitment. So this is, this is something that the Board of Education needs to take seriously. The other thing is, we don't know if we have classrooms. You can't just talk about adding classes without thinking about the physical makeup of our schools. If we don't have the classrooms, we can't make large sections. We also need to take the guidance from our administrators, our principals, the teachers. They need to tell us how they view these grades, and how they view the makeup of the classes. They might say that socially, at 15 students in a class in Westside, that might not be socially appropriate for that grade, fifth grade. So we need to take all of that professional guidance, the cost, and everything into account. And so I'm really looking forward to that discussion. We're going to be asking the administration, you're going to hear us all today, asking for information, like, how many rooms do we have in each building? How much will it cost to add not only the teacher for that class, but as Jill said, for the...
They need to tell us how they view these grades, and, and how they view the makeup of the classes. They might say that socially, at fifteen students in a class in Westside, that might not be socially appropriate for that grade, fifth grade. So we need to take all of that professional guidance, the cost, and everything into account. And so, I'm really looking forward to that discussion. We're going to be asking the administration, you're going to hear us all today, asking for information like, how many rooms do we have in each building? How much will it cost to add not only the teacher for that class, but as Jill said, for the foreign language, for phys ed, like how much more do we need? What is that cost going to be going forward? And, and it can't just be arbitrary. We can't have a set policy, that's why these are called guidelines, because we never know how this is going to go. So in my opinion, do I think twenty-six is, is too much? Absolutely, for the fifth grade, and I'm prepared to say that today. But I need a lot more information before I can vote on new guidelines and what those should say.
I think it's very fair, but your guidelines at twenty-three and twenty-five, the governor's trying to be at twenty, you should look at your guidelines as a max twenty.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we have to follow procedure in the meeting as just a matter of how these meetings are.
I understand.
Held, so we'd love to go back and forth, but we can't actually do it this way. But we're going to have a conversation as a board for you all to listen in. And as Tammy just said, and as I said before, one of the reasons we're having this meeting is because of our own monitoring of the numbers, and the importance of having a discussion when we see classes getting too big. That's what we're here for.
Sure, but I.
And the other thing is, like.
If the governor's at twenty, just explain one thing to me.
Wait, 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 but let me respond to that. The government, the governor has set twenty, but they can't.
They can't keep going back and forth.
Okay, but I'm, I mean, I'm following what's going on in the state. New York City is not prepared to implement the governor's guidelines this year, because they don't have the space and they don't have the money. So the governor may have said, you know, twenty and twenty-three and twenty-five, I have those numbers in front of me. But there, New York City isn't even implementing that this year.
Right, but Tammy, as we're having a conversation as a board, I think it's important to note that Cold Spring Harbor's bar shouldn't be New York City, right? That's not, we don't want to be comparing ourselves. Like, we hope we can be as good as New York City public schools, that's not why people move here, we should be better.
I think you mentioned a point though, that they can't even do it.
Right, but we.
You can set up any guidelines you want, but they're not implementing because they can't do it.
Yes, no, I understand, they can't afford it. But that doesn't mean that we can't look at what's best practice for Cold Spring Harbor. And we shouldn't be using New York City's public schools as our bar.
I agree.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right, so can I just?
No, I just wanted to say, I'm happy that we are addressing this issue today. I have young children, this has been a concern of mine for years, and I'm glad we're having this discussion focusing on the fifth grade today, and then having a further discussion in July eleventh. Before we moved on, I just wanted to, and Jill, you probably were anticipating doing this, on the agenda packet for the eleventh, to post those guidelines, so it's really accessible for everyone in the community to see what we're talking about.
Are they in the back? I think there's, I think there's, the board guidelines are in the back.
Okay, great, so they can.
Can we email them now, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, we requested that.
We're emailing them before today. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And I just want to reiterate, so by Friday, by tomorrow, I'll be able to provide the board with some comparisons. So as a school community, we look at some comparative districts. We have a list of those districts, so some of them are in the Suffolk cohort, what we call the Western Suffolk cohort. I'll be able to provide you with as much data as possible with our neighboring districts who responded to the survey in terms of their class sizes. And then we also look at some other districts, like Jericho, Sayos, which, you know, some of the parents referenced today, which we speak about when we look at our results. And so, I'll give you those numbers as well, so that you have some benchmarks to look at and say, oh, that's interesting data, or, wow, that, I didn't realize that, or, I wonder if that's why they're performing so well, or whatever.
And do we have the ability to do projections for what enrollment typically would look like over a five-year period in the district?
I can give you averages of, like, the past five years of kindergarten, our enrollments have gone down. We've lost two hundred students, K through twelve, over the past five years, but that's K through twelve. But, you know, we've had classes of a hundred and forty graduate, a hundred and twenty, and our incoming classes have been more like a hundred.
All right, was there data on the attrition, like, grade over grade, and what the projections are for moving forward?
Yeah, so I can move them up for you, you know, we have the data of our current students, we can move them up, and then kind of project about a hundred or so kindergartners, I mean, maybe, I'd love more kids coming in, so, you know, a spike year, but certainly, we can do that for you.
But we don't have information on.
Like, projected families have this, the three-year-old, and I don't have that.
And can we survey the community about siblings coming up?
We could try, I'm not so sure that we get it in timely manner, or.
Right.
But, I mean, we certainly could put it out there. You know, we have some preschool data for some of the kids who get services, but not enough that I, that I could. And the other thing is, even in a given year, where some families come in, some parents hold their kids back and put them in a, in a private school for kindergarten or preschool, and then they come to Cold Spring Harbor. So there is a good ten to twenty kids that that even could fluctuate, believe it or not, at the, at the primary level. So I don't know how, if I really could give you that strong of, of data at that point, but I can give you projected enrollments, and I can certainly roll up the students. I do think it's important, and I think it's a great question, to say, so what are the implications of this, right? So if we were to add, you know, one section here, a section there, just based on, you know, are classes around twenty-five? Are they twenty-three, twenty-four, whatever it may be? Well, then, what does that mean in the building? Does that mean, okay, I'm going to add a teacher, or two teachers, or three teachers in this building? So does that mean the reading teacher and the resource room teacher are going to share a classroom to provide support services? Does that mean that the fless teacher no longer has their own classroom? There, you know, we tend to, you know, when there's space, we tend to use it, right?
Can I just say something though, but for Lloyd Harbor in particular, last year, they had as many sections. So I'm assuming that they have the space.
Right, so, but I'm just saying, if we start to add more.
Well, I'm just talking about this.
Yep, yep, so again, this is, like, we'd have to look at it, and each, particularly Westside's a little bit tighter. And, you know, that would have to be looked at. And again, I want to reiterate, I think we can find data on both sides of this conversation.
Yeah, I guess that's a good question too, though. Do we have historical data of how many times at Lloyd Harbor, or at Westside, at Lloyd Harbor, where there were four sections for every grade level?
I could, I could look back.
And, you know, how did we make that work in the building?
Yep, yeah, absolutely, I could absolutely try to look at.
Because we're, right, it looks like last year, there were only two sections that were three, two years that were three.
Yeah, they run three or four, Westside tends to run two.
Right.
This year, sixth grade was an anomaly, where they had three sections of sixth grade. So certainly at Westside, they have an, they should have an extra room. That was planning to go to the math specialist, but they can collapse that, Lloyd Harbor.
Was there a space issue last year, when they had three sections of sixth grade?
No, but like, the math specialist didn't have their own room.
And they usually do?
Well, I shouldn't say usually do, they like to. It's a, you know, it's a quieter room, where you're not sharing it with somebody else. So, you know, in some buildings, we're able to do it, in some places, you share.
I was just going to, and in the nineties, I think, when they opened up Goose Hill, I believe, I don't have the exact numbers, but the class sizes were, it's like a mini baby boom, they had like a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty students, but I know we have different specials, and the building's set up differently, so.
Yeah, the building.
That must come to the conversation.
At Goose Hill is pretty tight, and they've put up some walls to make some smaller offices, where they've collapsed some of those rooms to be a reading room, a resource room, and they've put partitions up. So Goose Hill is a little more challenging, if you were to add sections there. I mean, that doesn't mean you couldn't take walls down again, but they've put up walls.
Can, have, do we know how often exceptions have been made, at what point?
No, it's always been followed, this timeline, to the beginning of August. I actually went back to see a board member's statement back in two thousand and fifteen, and, you know, same thing, they followed the, you know, early August date.
But as far as breaking into, you know, not hitting the twenty.
I don't have that kind of data, I, I mean, I just know what the enrollments are, but I wouldn't have, like, did they break this, did they not? And so much of it is really, I mean, you get a child that moves in August first, and then three move out, and then a family moves in with four, like, it fluctuates from week to week.
So wouldn't that be better to have an extra class for what happens?
So, when it comes to building the budget, we do build in extra staffing for breakage. We absolutely do. And that's not just for the elementary schools. When we don't have the high school schedule built, when we're building the school budget, I mean, we're doing all this ahead of time, so we need flexibility. So there are three positions within the budget, plus another fifty thousand dollars, because oftentimes, you know, a student will need a teacher assistant, or a, an aide. And, you know, they, a child moved into the district, or they needed it on their IEP. So again, we need the funds for that. You don't say, no, oh, we didn't budget for that. So in terms of the breakage, we have three teaching positions in breakage, plus another fifty thousand dollars. We are currently using, we are over in a point one in science, a point one in PE right now, based on schedules, plus an additional point four for academic intervention services. So we're over a point six from where we originally were, so we have two point four.
But that's what, having teachers taken away.
Yeah. We bud, we, we, we projected the budget based on what the enrollments were. So these were part of the projections. So we still have those two point four positions based on the sections that are on the, the data. So we have an extra two point four teachers, plus the fifty thousand.
Right, okay.
Because again, right now, enrollment at kindergarten is at a hundred. So our sections are twenty, twenty-one at kindergarten. Again, you know, some, I think we're pretty good in terms of families moving in and having come to kindergarten orientation. But we've had, you know, we could have twenty kids come in in July and August. It's not unusual, in the past, we did move it up this year. We did a lot of advertising to get families in early. A number of families, like, we had six families that are on the cusp of, am I holding my child back? Or, a lot of those families have already told us, so I feel better about our kindergarten numbers now. But I mean, you're at twenty, twenty-one.
Right, is there extra room in this building now for another section?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I think what would be helpful for next week then, in addition to the cost, is to know historically, what's the largest in the last, you know, ten years? What's the largest enrollment, or in sections, that the kids have had in each school building? Would be good to know, what the capacity was for that historically. And also to look at, is it possible to make more room if we have to break more classes?
Yeah, so I'm going to give you, I actually have asked the building principals to say, if we added one more section, what's the impact? No impact. We have the room, you know, two more sections, three more sections. If you added, you know, three more sections, I'd have to collapse these two classrooms. Not general education classrooms, but, you know, the two reading teachers would need to share space. Or the music teachers couldn't have their own room, they'd have to, we'd have to reconfigure the, something like that.
Right, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with things like that. And also, I get a little nervous when we talk about the social implications of smaller class sizes, because I don't, I don't see that as a concern when we're talking about seventeen, eighteen, even fifteen kids. And maybe that's because I'm an independent school administrator too, but I don't see the implications of that as a negative. I think we've all seen kids in classes with twenty-two kids where there've been social problems too.
Of course, I'm, I'm going to report that, to be fair to the principals.
That is something that they have concerns about, when the classes get too small, and particularly in the upper grades.
Well, especially when you're looking at fifth and sixth grade though, where they're starting their switches, right? They're, they're mixing up, so, and kids, they do recesses together, and lunches together, and, yeah.
I know, but what you're saying, Jill, is that the principals have those concerns at the smaller levels.
When they, that, they have more concerns at the smaller levels as the kids move up, to the social implications, and to the fifth and sixth grade. That's what the principals report.
What's the limit, what does that mean?
Oh, well, I think, what, when you talk about, right, is that there's enough variety of kids in the class, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'll give you an example, just in going into second, uh, second grade this year, at Westside, there is a smaller, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but a real small handful number of boys at Westside this year, in, going into second grade, as compared to girls. And so if you have two sections, and you're, I don't know if it's a dozen, you're, you know, breaking up into six and six, you don't have a lot of wiggle room when you only have two sections at Westside. Believe it or not, it affects Westside much more than it affects Lloyd Harbor, because you have three sections typically at Lloyd Harbor, maybe four. Westside typically stays at two. So, you know, that, that's something to take, to be mindful of. And then we have parents, and the building principals, I think, do a really nice job of trying to meet those requests, where, you know, I want Johnny with Michael and Joey, and, you know, these are things. Or I don't want these two boys together, because we've had issues. Or these two girls have had some challenges in the upper grades, and I'd like, you know, to separate them. And when you, with more sections, there's more ability to separate them.
Right, but then you, you know, you're numbering.
Can we also have the gender breakdown of the classes then too? Because that's information that we don't have currently. Yeah, that would be good.
Yep.
And I would also like to know, you know, if we change these guidelines to lower numbers, can you tell us the cost, right? Like, for this coming school year, as an example, if we move these guidelines to lower numbers, what would the cost be at different levels? And would we need additional classroom space or not? So maybe you can come up with, you know, based on the comparables that you're going to get from our surrounding districts, maybe pick some lower numbers for these guidelines, and then set it out for us. This is the cost, these are the additional classrooms we would need.
I'd actually like to see a range, maybe not based on other districts, but based on our numbers and what it looks like to, to break sections. Because I just get a little nervous when we compare ourselves to other schools, because I like to think at Cold Spring Harbor, we should be setting ourselves apart.
No, I know, but we need to come up with something lower than our current guidelines, so finding some other numbers.
If we can look at what it would actually cost to break these sections would be helpful to us, and then maybe we could do what the average would be for this year too, so we can see that.
Although knowing those numbers will help us set us apart, right? So I would like to know the surrounding numbers, because.
In addition, perhaps.
Yeah, meaning it will help us.
In addition, perhaps, I'd like to know the actual numbers of what it would cost, though, to break the sections.
Can we know if there are any, like, I know we talked about special circumstances, but as far as like additional people that need to be in the classroom, you know, if a child needs, has a seat, or, you know, something, just adding an extra body into the classroom.
Well, they're going to have that no matter what.
Yeah, that's no matter what.
Yeah, and, and that can change, like, it could be by periods. And, you know, like, so a child might just have somebody pushing into certain academic subjects, as opposed to all day. Really, that would fluctuate. But if it was a full-time teacher assistant with a student, I could probably get that. I'd caution you about that, you know, because that person's technically oftentimes there for that child, and so.
They're there also no matter what the enrollment is.
You know, so if we have three sections, they'd still be in the room with smaller numbers. But it, you know, if, if I can get some of that, look, some of the information you're asking me for right now.
We're not going to have by two. I know, it's a large conversation, which is why we were going to have a conversation today about a possible exception to guidelines, particularly looking at grade five for today, with then, future conversation to happen. So, and I know people keep raising their hands. Jack, are we really not able to have a conversation or answer questions from the audience at this point? Or is that just been past practice? I just need to know the actual answer.
Well, practice has always been, definitely, it's a board discussion, it's a board discussion. You can take two comments before, you can decide to have a comments section after. But in order for the board to do its deliberation, it's the board's deliberation.
Okay.
We don't want to interrupt, but we want to ask questions.
I just, I just want to, I'm trying to ask about policy and procedure. So can we, if it's not in the agenda, are we allowed to add a comments section at the end of our discussion? Also, because I see a lot of eager people, and I feel that it's really important for people not to feel like they need to apologize for participating in school board meetings. They should feel like they can speak up, so, yeah, thank you.
There's no reason you can't, you're through with your discussion, take a resolution to add a comments section.
Great, thank you for the clarity. I just feel terrible seeing people raise their hands, and we're just ignoring it, and I don't want them to feel ignored, thank you.
The point is though, for you to be able to deliberate without having to respond to.
Got it, thank you, that is very clear, thank you, okay. Has anyone, does anyone else have any other questions to ask, or comments may I make a?
So let me just, you want me to go over what, Westside and?
Sure.
Yeah, so Westside School currently is projected to have, for grade five, twenty-five, twenty-six students in two classes. If you were to break that section, you would have, and adding a third teacher, you would have seventeen and eighteen in that class. you would have seventeen and eighteen in that class. Jen, do the math for me on the, um, Lloyd Harbor. So Lloyd Harbor currently is projected, oh, I'm sorry, and West Side, I do have a little data. Again, this is the information we have. One student could be moving out of West Side, so it would be twenty-five.
Well, we also heard though that there's a student who may be moving in, who's not in the numbers also, so.
That's just what's come to the registrar. Um, and in Lloyd Harbor, um, we have currently twenty-six. What we're hearing through our registrar and principal, one student moving in, one student moving out. So we're back to twenty-six, um, at Lloyd Harbor. Um, if we break that section from three to four, I believe it's twen- nineteen twenty, right? And so that's where we would be for grade five for those two schools.
Do you have any other information that would help inform?
So I don't have any, in terms of the makeup of the kids and any special, I don't have any. Again, you know, this was a discussion even at West Side last year. Putting the teacher assistant in there worked well for that grade because it was grade four and now they're moving up to grade five. So there were not special circumstances for those students that the principal, you know, at that time had requested that.
Are there any other grades that there's special circumstances in currently where the board should be aware?
Um, I'd have to go back to the building principals. Um, you know, the, there, I don't wanna say, speak from, you know, let me get some more information from you, sure.
I think in just keeping the conversation really on fifth grade, one of my concerns with larger classes going into fifth grade is with this idea of accelerating math as the kids go into the junior high. That wouldn't they benefit then also from having smaller class sizes? These are kids who in their foundational math years were online. They weren't in school, they may have missed chunks of really important math, and then we're going to accelerate the math program for them. And I think it's a disservice to them to keep them in these large classes with that ahead of them when what we're doing for them is really trying to give them the benefit of accelerated math. And I think they'll lose out on that if we don't, at least at this time, um, break those two grades.
And I, I know you're talking about the social aspect.
Or that one, two schools.
I think that a lot of these kids have missed out on a lot of social skills through COVID. So I actually think a smaller class size could benefit their social learning. And also, we have a lot of new desks, these bigger desks, the chairs, like, it's tight.
Yeah, and some of the, um, I would say, when I look at some of the sixth grade classes, um, just at West Side in particular, just the way that those sixth grade rooms are a bit smaller and then you put some of the bigger desks in, it it definitely, you got bigger kids. Bigger kids, bigger desks, you know, it can be a little bit tighter. Um, West, Lloyd Harbor rooms tend to be a little bit bigger than West Side, just based on configuration. And, you know, we've, we have really nice furniture and cabinetry now that has been added to all these rooms. Um, but it does take up space.
So what does Dr. Barnes think about moving to seventeen eighteen for that grade?
But it would be nineteen, like, now.
Jen, Jen, just do the math again, it's seventeen eighteen?
Nineteen.
Fifty-one divided by, well, it's fifty divided by three.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah. And if we had one more student, that might, it could be eighteen. Um, so, you know, Dr. Barnes, you know, I'm gonna say he's probably gonna play it down the middle. He'd go either way, you know, he's gonna tell you that he'd make it work and he's gonna tell you that would be great to have small class sizes. He's not, you know, he hasn't weighed in to say, yes, do this, or don't do this.
Can we just go back to the budget? You said there's two point four FTEs available.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that would mean it's already budgeted for if we chose to use.
Yep, you could use these two positions, yep. And then we would just need, like, um, based on some of the specials and the, or what we call encore classes, we'd need another, like, point three, um, just looking at tentative schedules. So it would be like a two point three.
Okay.
I have a little bit, uh, just based on overages in some of the buildings and the way the schedules have been set up.
To what teacher would that be, two point three, I mean, a point three? Is there a specific teacher in the meeting?
No, so it's like spread across all the encore, so PE is three times a week.
Yeah.
Um, so it's three times a week at both schools.
But they did it last year, so how does that, do you just put that back into effect?
No, so we project out, again, I I wanna say, like, again, when we know, when we roll up, when we're doing the budget, we're rolling up the classes. So we know we're down a section at kindergarten, we know we're down a section at West Side. West Side Sixth Grade is graduating out, so they had three sections, they only have two. So we knew we were losing a teacher at West Side. So we didn't build that into the budget. We didn't build the section into the budget in Goose Hill. Goose Hill Kindergarten has five sections. They're moving up to grade one, their grade one had six. So it's one less section.
I'm just talking about this.
But that's what I'm saying, on the overall budget, we're down numbers. We budgeted like that.
Right, but there is also still an overage in this year's budget that we haven't decided what to do with yet, is that?
Yeah, that's what I just shared.
No, more than the two point nine employees. No, there's not an overage that needs to be voted on next month to see where it goes in the budget.
Oh, you're talking about, um, funds.
Yeah, funds.
Funds, I thought you were talking about positions.
Yes, then we have funds that haven't been used in our budget that need to be allocated.
Surplus at the end of the year.
Surplus, yeah.
Yeah, that that is to close the books and records, not the budget that the public voted on and approved. The budget approves by appropriation line and that is locked in from when we voted in May.
But so the surplus from this year doesn't, can't get rolled over into the next year's budget?
The board would have to take an action to declare it an expense, an ordinary contingent expense.
Okay.
So if the, um, if they determine that something's an ordinary contingent expense that was not built into the budget.
Right.
They can then appropriate some of that money and increase the budget that the public voted on.
Okay.
It would be an unknown ordinary contingent expense.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
Well, right now, it looks like this particular grade is at the highest, right? And so that's why we're talking about this particular grade. But if come August, another grade reaches that amount.
That's why I'm asking.
Then what are we doing? We don't have two point, we have two point nine.
That's why I was asking what, if we can do, make a special motion to add to our budget. And the answer is yes, that we can.
There's a mechanism for that, yes.
Um, is there any more information?
You know, I don't know, I'd like to hear from everybody else about whether we should be voting on this today or whether we should see in August where all of the grades fall and see what the numbers are and how much money we would need for the teachers. I mean, I I really don't like the numbers for this fifth grade. I think it's it's too high. But at the same time, I am worried about people coming in and out of the district and I don't wanna shortchange other grades if they rise as well. So I would like to hear from my other board members, what do you think? I mean, should we be?
Looking at the class sizes, they're pretty, they're a lot lower than that, right? I mean, just looking at second grade is nineteen twenty, we have.
This is West Side you're looking at now.
Yeah, West Side, right. So, I mean, how many kids would have to move in? I mean, maybe third grade.
But it's.
Fourth, fourth grade.
Fourth grade and West Side.
Fourth grades borderline.
But it's Lloyd Harbor, if you look at Lloyd Harbor, there's a lot of schools that are right there.
Yeah, second grade is fourth grade.
Lloyd Harbor's second and fourth are right at that number as well. So if a couple of peoples move, a couple of people move in.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Third grade is very close.
Then we're, you know, making an exception now before we know the final numbers.
Yeah, but are you gonna say it's okay to have twenty-six kids in third grade? Like, I think we vote that down.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
You know, like, would, we wouldn't want that in any grade, right? We'd have to figure this out.
We do need to understand what we budgeted and how much money we have for the year. So we may have a surplus, but there are other things that we might need that money for as well too, so.
Well, let me ask you this, do, are, and, I mean, I'm hearing like twenty-six, right, is too many. I think people are agreeing, I think.
Well, I don't know that we're all in agreement, but I I feel twenties. Yeah, I I do as well, Bruce.
Bill, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I I definitely agree with Alex that I'm more concerned about fifth grade at the moment. Um, I I don't know about the other grades, but I I know fifth grade is very important when they start changing classes and taking more accelerated work, so. I don't know how to separate it, it sounds unfair to think about fifth grade and prioritize them.
Well, I I think that because fifth grade has hit twenty-six is why we're really having this meeting now rather than in August. And I understand the concern is that what if four kids move out of Lloyd Harbor between now and August? But at some point, you have to staff and hire teachers. And we wanna find the best teachers for our classes too, not who's left at the end of the summer without a position.
Let me reassure you about that, let me reassure you about that. So if we, if you were, whatever, if it's today, next week, or the first week in August, we have two teachers that we could hire immediately that I feel very confident we could return. So we wouldn't have that concern about, like, doing a whole full-blown search for two positions.
Okay.
Okay, let me ask you this, if we said, you know, so that you don't have to have a whole full-blown discussion about all the class sizes, what if you said at twenty-five for now, anything over twenty-five, we're gonna break? Right, so, like, for now, so then you could break the grade five right now? And then we'd monitor the other ones through either the July meeting or when you have the additional data?
I don't know that I wanna make a decision now for all the grades until we have the data. I think for today, I'd like to say that I think twenty-five is too big for fifth grade. And then I'd look to look at the data and have a more comprehensive discussion.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, for today, twenty-five.
For this grade, I don't wanna say it comprehensively for all grades. I don't think that that's appropriate at this time, we don't have enough information, is how I feel.
But I feel that if, if, like, if fourth grade goes to twenty-five in the next two weeks, have we hamstrung ourselves by making a decision today without telling Jill twenty-five is the breaking? I think we would all agree that twenty-five is too much for fourth today as well.
My concern is actually on the opposite side. I'm happy to say that for now, we're saying twenty-five, but I also want to revisit it for the other grades if we think we can manage it at a lower number. The break.
So, yeah, I mean, I just, like I said, I just wor- I, I just worry about people coming in and out of the district in the next few weeks and.
Then we have, we'll deal with that. I think today we should just deal with the fifth grade.
Okay.
Right, isn't that what we?
I agree, I would try to make this perfect. I think doing something at least incrementally would be a good start and then we can figure out what else after we have more data.
I agree with that, Bill.
So we're voting on an exception to the guidelines?
No, oh, yeah, and it, but only for.
Just the fifth grade.
Grade would be my recommendation. Tammy, I see what you're saying, that if fourth grade hits twenty-five, do we wanna say, go ahead and break it so we don't have to reconvene? My concern is if we say now we're recommending twenty-five, then are we not gonna entertain further discussion about class size in general? I don't think that that's where we wanna land.
No, I don't wanna land there either, yeah, no.
In the meantime, while we're doing our guidelines, I'm just trying to clarify what you're saying. In the meantime, while we're doing our guidelines, you're saying, once it hits twenty-five, we'll break, even while we're discussion, discussing guidelines for the fall?
Yeah, like, second grade, we've received a lot of emails, they're at twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
If second grade goes to twenty-five in the next week, why are we gonna make them wait? Like, why wouldn't we just say today, for any grade that hits twenty-five, let's break it while we're discussing the guidelines and going forward?
Discussion on it, because that makes me very.
Absolutely, no, I I've been wanting, listen, I I think these guidelines need a serious.
Redo.
You know, we need to seriously review them.
So you're saying that.
I'm sorry, I gotta go, I missed three meetings today to be here. You haven't, you haven't amended the guidelines since nineteen eighty-six.
No, 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 that's not true, it was, I know it's wrong, it was done in two thousand sixteen, was the last time.
Anyone signing off on something that says, like, we should max it less than twenty? I mean, twenty should be your max. Why would you have guidelines that are twenty-three, twenty-five, twenty-six? It makes no sense, sorry.
Okay, so, so, so I'm gonna just make a recommendation, so, again, I, I, maybe I didn't say it as clearly as Tammy, but what I'm saying, asking you is, if anything hits twenty-five right now, are you okay with me breaking those sections?
Yes.
Yes.
In any of these grades?
Other than fifth grade.
Yes, across the board, I mean.
You're saying you don't, not for fifth grade?
My, my can, I, no, I I definitely think that we should do it for fifth grade. I just, like Tammy had said, you know, what if, like, twenty kids move into the district? And now we have, you know, every grade has twenty-five kids and there's no room to put them on.
Okay, I don't anticipate that, just based on enrollment. And again, I have, you have the sheet in front of you, I'm hearing one pending, two pending, one pending. Like, it's not, we don't, I mean, COVID, yes, we got some influx, people had taken their children out and brought them back. But that's not the data that we see. I mean, we, and and keep in mind, even when we make these decisions, you know, even early August, sometimes people wait till, believe it or not, they just bought their house, they haven't gotten to the registrar.
I moved to the district on August sixteenth one year, so we didn't break the class though, people were hoping they would.
So, again, I mean, I'm just, that's what happened at Lloyd Harbor, two people moved out, right before school started.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm asking you to give me the authority to break any section that hits twenty-five throughout the summer. And then I would not recommend certainly K one-two, even close to twenty-five. That's not what I'm saying, so I wanna be really clear. I believe primary classes belong at twenty-two.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna review all the guidelines.
Yeah.
We're saying that now, but we're still gonna review the guidelines.
But what Jill just said is interesting, that you wouldn't recommend twenty, second grade being close to twenty-five and second grade's at twenty-four now, so should we be having that discussion?
I think you should wait till we can get you all the numbers. Let me give you the statistical data from, you know, neighboring districts, I want you to have everything. I want you to know the impact. This is one class at Lloyd, grade two, it's one class here, the impact of that, you know, one class, two class, she's gonna collapse this room, this kid's gonna share here, like, I I want you to know all the information. And, look, I don't think this is a rushed discussion, and I wanna add one more thing to this. We've met with the special education parent leaders, we've had discussions, and I know this isn't a new topic for Cold Spring Harbor, it's been a topic for many years. But the parents are asking for co-teach classes at the elementary level. And we, because our, of our size and the number of students who would meet that.
Can you explain what that is for people who might not know?
Yeah, sure, so, uh, co-teaching sections are, um, two teachers in the room. And sometimes in some co-teach, it's for part of the day, so half of the day, you'd have two teachers, typically for, you know, math, ELA. And half of the day, sometimes you have an aide or a TA for the other half, or sometimes it's just one teacher. It's for students who have typically significant learning needs in ELA and mathematics. And currently, how we service those students, because we're a smaller district, we service them by giving them two periods of resource room or two periods of co-teach, of, um, consultant teacher, consultant teacher. And where somebody might push into the math period, the special education teacher pushes into the math period, or is the child's pulled out. The really nice thing about co-teach classes is that you have a group of students who have their needs met collaboratively with one teacher pushing in, can differentiate the instruction during that math block or that ELA block. And sometimes these children, and oftentimes, they are a year or two years delayed in those instruction and areas. So they have significant deficits. It's not like they're just a couple of units behind or three months behind. They're significantly behind, but it might be just for ELA, it might just be for math. So it is a really effective model to have co-teach classes. The challenge for us is, we don't have enough students. Typically, co-teach is four, five, six, eight kids in a co-teach class. We don't have that enrollment in one building. So our enrollment, if if I'm talking, you know, based on, I know how many students get consultant teacher double period or resource room, we'd have probably three per building, maybe four in in certain cases. So you're spending a lot of money to provide that level of service for only a handful of kids. Some districts take all the co-teach students and put them at one school. Some schools do all the special class students and they all go to one school. And that's. all the special class students, and they all go to one school. And that's really gonna happen here. Our special class kindergartners and first graders are all going to probably go to West Side next year. So, you know, they gotta move together because we have a small handful. Then you're not gonna have two sides of town for three children. So, but I, I want to recognize that that's, that should be on the board's radar, that co-teaching model. And there are other ways to look at it. It doesn't have to be two full-time teachers. It could be part-time. So it's one gen ed and half the day special education.
And couldn't it be per grade? Like, maybe first grade doesn't need it?
Right, I'm, yes, but typically, I'm gonna say, we have the students. We might have one child. And so then you're not gonna offer it? It, it's a question. Maybe you set a marker where we'd have to have three students meet the criteria in order to provide that level of service.
Well, if you only have one, then you push in, you could figure out how to push in just for those, and then you might not need it to share it with the other class.
You'd be back to consultant teacher or double period resource room. So, again, it's, it's a larger discussion. And I know that our community has been asking for this for a long time. But again, Christine, one teacher, you budget for one teacher, what's the, what's the amount?
$100,000.
For?
Salary and benefits. $100,000. Their salary is less than that. That includes their benefits if we hire a step-one teacher, master step-one.
For the board, but typically, I'm gonna tell you, we don't hire master step-ones. We get a lot of people with experience.
Yes.
And, and that's more. And then it also is another point two of the specials. Because every day the child gets a special, that's a point two of a schedule. I mean, I'm adding it all up, art, music. It's another point two.
What you're talking about for co-teaching?
No.
Oh, you're going back to talking about co.
So it's a 1.2 teacher for every teacher that you add?
Right.
Okay. Every sec, I'm sorry, every section that you add.
Do we now feel like we've had enough discussion about what's agenda for today? Class size breakage, grade five, with the addition of breaking classes at 25 while we continue our discussion over the summer? So we can move forward to have a motion to take a vote on that at this time? Does everyone feel like?
I just have one question.
Yeah.
On, on the second consideration about other classes breaking the 25, we're confident we can get the, the remaining budget from the other accounts that hasn't been voted on yet? Like, if we have to add two more teachers beyond the two for the fifth grade?
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell you where, where the money would come from.
Okay. Yeah.
We'd have to look at other budget codes and things like that.
Okay.
Okay. So, right, I just want one more time. We're three positions plus the 50,000. It's about a point two to point three for the special for each grade. So, and we, we already know we have some reading AIS, a little bit of the high school. So if we add the two positions right now, you'd be at 2.9 in total used.
Okay. Should I take a motion for a vote? Can I have a motion to take a vote on class size breakage for today? Yes, Heather, second?
Kate.
Kate.
Can you spell that out a little more clearly?
Yes. A motion to vote on class size breakage for grade five and for any class that hits 25 for the summer while we continue our conversation about the guidelines. Okay. First, a motion for it?
We have a motion from Heather.
Heather, and a second from Kate. Okay. I just restated it, so I didn't know if we needed to get it again. Okay. All in favor? All right. Thank you. I'd also like to make a motion then to add on an additional, an amendment? Additional public comment. But we do have another meeting after this, so for 10 minutes?
Three, yeah, three minutes per person.
It's, it typically is three minutes per person. It, I, it's, yes, I know, it felt very few people were speaking, so it was okay to go over our time today. All right. So may I, I would like to take a motion to add additional public comment. Tammy, second. Heather, thank you. Would anyone, oh, all in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Any discussion and then?
Any discussion?
No.
No, all in favor?
Great.
All right. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak at this time? Please go to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, Christine Scalante. Thank you for listening to all us today. I just really more had a question. What is it for second, third, and fourth grade? I know we were focusing a lot on fifth grade. Was just curious what the numbers are going into second, third, and fourth this year?
Oh, what the current enrollment numbers? Do you want to share that?
And are we open to discussion of, like, 22 kids per class, you know, in those? Like, I know we just made, had a conversation about 25, but?
Two through what? Two through four.
Two through four. So the enrollment at Lloyd Harbor in second grade is 70 students currently. Third grade is 90, and fourth grade is 70. Second grade is projected for three sections. Third grade is projected for four sections, and fourth grade is projected for three sections.
So my other question is, and this, we're fairly near the community, last year, wasn't there four classes for second grade?
Yes, yep. So they had 90 students.
Okay.
And we have 70 this year. So yes, there were four sections with 90, and this year we're three sections with 70.
Okay. I mean, maybe July 11, could we speak about, like, keeping that fourth teacher for the second grade as well?
That's the, the purpose of discussion on July 11 is to talk about the class guidelines and to take, take a real look at them. But also, we, in our conversation, did state that we're gonna continue a conversation about class size.
West Side? Did you want West Side? No. Okay.
Anyone else? Yes, come on up.
Again, Christine, Asta, Harbor Hill Drive. I know that you all work really hard, and you were saying at the end of the year, people move in and they move out. I would just think it's a logistical nightmare if you're maxing out the class size. If two kids do move in, let's say the end of August, and then you're scrambling to add a class and add a teacher. I just think it would make more sense if we gave ourselves a little wiggle room in each class so that when that happens, not everyone is scrambling to find a teacher, find a classroom. You know, I feel like when we're maxing out each class, it's almost impossible. And then we're gonna be at the point where we just add the teacher assistant because I saw that little asterisk, asterisks on the bottom saying that it would be too late in the year to do that, and we'd have to add the teacher assistant. So it's, it's only a suggestion. It's nothing like, I just have that suggestion.
Thank you.
Allison Meyerhands, 18 Vanwick Lane.
Can Allison, can you go to the microphone? We're recording the meeting, so the microphone will pick up what you're saying.
Allison Meyerhands, 18 Vanwick Lane, Lloyd Harbor. A very, very heartfelt thank you. I've had parents texting me throughout the day, what are they deciding, what are they doing? Parents with specialized kids, gifted and talented kids, middle-of-the-road kids that they're worried about. The, the level of worry that I get on my phone, I know you guys have gotten a lot of emails. Thank you. It's a beautiful start. It means a lot to these kids. So thank you for the start.
Well, now we're all crying, so. Would anyone else like to say anything? If not, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. Tammy, second. Heather, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.